Heavenly Father, we want to come before you and sit on board here in Weston County asking for wisdom and guidance. And we know that all good things come from you. Thank you for everything in Jesus' name.
Thank you, Jared.
You're a board member, so you can be on the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everyone has the agenda in front of them. Is there any additions or changes to the agenda? We got a call from Susan yesterday about the wall out there. I did too. And she's the only one working in the police department up today. She's going to try to be here at nine. I asked, I just invited her to visit with us while we were doing dotchers to, so she can get back to work over there. Because I don't know if she's on her way or not, but that's... Dave?
Billy and I were both out there. We took pictures and we sent them out there. It's something we'd like to get cleaned up before the end of, you know, before fair. And look at the rocks that's there. I don't think most of those rocks are suitable to go back. A lot of them are slivered off. They're just, you know, they're just deteriorating quite a bit. So, you know, that's kind of where it's at right now. And Susan may have some other stuff.
Yeah. We'll give her a few minutes to show up. While we're working on vouchers, she gets here, we'll discuss the meantime while we're working.
Don't you need to approve the agenda?
Oh, is there any other changes or additions to the agenda?
Can I pull the joint power agreement just to period it a little bit?
Yeah.
I'm trying to change it, I'll just...
Okay. Pull the joint powers, cream it out, look at it individually.
Next motion, period, consider agenda as amended?
Second. I have a motion, pro per second, to approve the agenda, dinner, the agenda.
The agenda.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll do the... I have a motion, pro per second, to approve the agenda as amended. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion, period. Next is the consent agenda. Let's see if we can pull that out of the...
If they motion to approve consent agenda, minus the joint powers agreement.
Second. I have a motion, pro per second, to approve the consent agenda with pulling the joint power agreement to look it over. Is there any other changes to consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion, period. We'll work on vouchers.
How did I do?
I gave you the hour. We can have a chair front and center.
Because that's up. I'm not, the beatings will now begin. Hey, David. Glad I could be here early this morning.
Your crew's not helping you. They're all sitting in the back.
That's okay.
So, what is yours?
Okay, so, I haven't seen it. These two, these, all these guys have actually seen the damage to the wall. I have not seen it, other than the photos that I sent to all of you. Did you get out there this morning?
I didn't get by it, no. I stopped here this morning.
So, I was advised by Linda, I think, that that, right there by the, um... grandstands, that that had been replaced. Linda, do you know when that was replaced?
I have no idea, but it's already concrete.
Yeah, there was a second year of old concrete.
So, my first concern when I saw that, looking at the diagonal, the angle of the photos, was if that was going to run down to the grandstand. It was later when I had that conversation with Linda, that that had been repaired. So, the panic and emergency of people being in immediate danger. But that still, I mean, it's a huge problem, and it needs to be addressed. We need to take some action. What do you guys think? You guys were the ones that went and looked at it. Do you have some?
Yeah, I was there.
Thank you. I'm glad that's what you heard.
So, there about 60 feet, you ever take, that dent collapsed. There is a pole there that, um... That's got some wire on it, a lot of speaker wires, stuff like that. Um, there's another 40 feet that it's, um... Maybe show up this afternoon, have you look more hangar tomorrow morning, after a little more hangar. It's a pretty good sure chance it came right into. So, the biggest, like, my biggest concern on it right now is, I mean, yeah, we can clean that all up. My goal would be to make it look presentable for fair. It is out of, um, like, for any of our fair events and stuff that are happening in the bigger area. It's off the side of that, and it's not affecting that. Um, you know, plan of action right now, I'd recommend, is clean it up, make it look good for now. After fair, as soon as fair is done, figure out a plan to redo the retaining wall completely. Up to a certain point, I mean, those old stones are pretty, I mean, they've been there for a long time. I'm, I'm, I like the looks of it, and this, it's something that's could stay, but it neither. Like David said, the ones that fell are pretty much shot, I'm not able to again probably. Um, but my concern right now is that pole for the speaker wires and everything there. Electrical there, because if that, and it's, it's leaning, that's an issue.
I was about to look at this one there, too. What would you, I mean, to get it, get you through the fair, is come up with, say, four or five of them big cement blocks. Right now, we put out what does, that's right through that pedestal, and reinforce with that, just to keep it, to stabilize it, so it doesn't come down to that pedestal.
That could be a true real option.
You know, to buy you some time on that part there, because if it collapses, I don't know what else feeds up to that pedestal.
Or what else the breakers.
Yeah.
Did you guys get over and shut the breaker off?
No, we didn't shut the breaker off, but I believe it goes to the grandstands, and it actually goes across. Its electricity goes to the prosion, as in, and the power that's behind it, in the, you know, opening pins. Those, that power there just runs the big lines, that's all it runs. I believe it goes, I believe it goes from that pedestal, goes across to the grandstands for lights, and then, like I said, then it goes across to the... Basically, it's the prosion, that's what is powering.
So, do you think, you two think, if we get four of those big, um, two by six or two by four cinder, or concrete blocks to, it will, it will brace that up, so we don't have any electrical issues?
I think we got, if we could talk to county to come and over, because we have some of those blocks, but I think they could probably pick up and use for right now. If they bring their big loader in, set it down, shove it into the wall, I think it would hold it. I don't think, I think the pole would fit fair. But I'm like, Billy, I think everything from where you have cement is all going to come out, because if you look, the water's been going down, and you can see where it's running underneath the rock also. So, I think the whole wall, the whole wall, I believe, is just a total loss.
We have a meeting on the 10th, and we can address that further, and then get back to you guys on what we vote on, and see if that's something that you guys can help us with. Um, obviously, that's not an urban project.
I have no idea what's coming at it, but I've been digging. If anything right now is saturated, this ground is, just leave it set exactly the way it is. Don't move any stone out of there, anything, because I've put up those big walls before in a couple places I lived in. And that ground's got to be dry, and you got to pack in about six inches of rubble, and that's all got to be normal. If you start pulling that stuff out, more of the bank will fall down if it rains more. Just leave it, except for the electric pole. Just leave the rest just set. Don't move it.
Yeah.
I have a second request, that when we pick all those stones up, remember they tore the county jail down, they took them all down to the county yard, and people have used them over the years. Your entry signs into Newcastle, those round things that hold, say, well, from Newcastle, are made from the jail. You can put those in the county yard in case anybody wants to use them to build something in some neighborhood.
Sal, salvage it if you can.
Yes, yes.
So, do you want us to get ahold of Jim and see if he can do that?
If you can try, he's, he's not even going to be here, he'll just send us an email. He is down south over in the Lake today, trying to take care of some problems down there.
So, I was looking at that wall, and just a suggestion to the board and to the fairgrounds to maybe look into, instead of replacing that with a solid rock wall that's there from that section. I think I talked to you about this yesterday. Um, the highway department, we use what's called a gabion wall to avoid washout. It's a lot, lot cheaper, and rock is easy to find for it. You fill the baskets, stack them on top of each other for that section, problem solved for erosion. It's also a much cheaper way to go, probably something that can do it pretty quickly.
They work very, very well, but National Guard uses them all the time to abate, excuse me, they're a block.
Very, very, very cost effective.
They're not as pretty, but they do work.
They can be, depending what rock you put in there, but yeah. At the, the end of, end of the project, you still see the wire on the outside? Yep. You do.
You could rebuild that too, with those big blocks. I think Frederick sells them for $120 a piece.
They're very, they're very cost effective.
Plus, it needs to be higher, so that it's run off. If you get a five-foot wall there, you got a little bit of a slope coming up to that, put it around off a little longer, coming off that. There's options.
Does the county have an engineer?
The big thing is, it's never going to be fixed until we do something with that drainage.
It has to.
We're going to have to, we're going to have to build something up there to keep erasing that wall and divert it around the end, so it can get on out to the end.
Is there any engineer that we have to talk to privately, some people coming over to look at drainage issue, for going on, future plans and suggestions? They never came out, looked at it. Is there an engineer firms or anything you guys go to use, someone to come out and look at it? Because I mean, that whole thing is drainage, we should...
The whole property.
Hold that.
I know Jimmy's road bridge use at Bear Lodge, very, very in town.
I can, I, I've talked to Ken. I talked to Ken. I work, we work with Ken, it's new talent. I'll see if he'll give us an estimate, what we would do to come up with.
It might be where it's above the facility like that, it might, you'd have a certified engineer to take a look at it, too.
I would feel clear about that.
Yeah. The name may have, and them guys have some ideas.
Also, if you're going to fit, make the decision to leave the wall there where it sits, you need to rope it off, even during fair, because somebody trips over it and it gets hurt, that might be an issue.
It is roped off. It's been roped off for a couple of years.
Yeah, I saw what was there, but kidding me.
As far as, as far as, that's, that's, my, that's the same thing as building this county property, so I think it's an issue as far as coming out of the fair. Same, fix something, draw a building.
Kind of above and beyond your microscope of your... I get it, wait.
No.
So, what's your plan of attack? You going to just figure out some of them blocks and do it?
Well, I think that's what we're first thing. We'll try to figure out what we need to do to get that stabilized, and then we have a meeting on Tuesday, and we'll vote to just make a decision.
Yep, yeah, yeah. Jimmy's not available, maybe if Darren can come over, if their loader's in town.
Okay.
Get a location.
All right. Get a location.
All that bolt, electric bolt.
See how, how far it is. We know it's there, and right now, we just want to shore it up. I'll get ahold of Bucky and see if he can do us a hand if we can get anybody out of there.
You may reach out to Greg with the city, run over there up there, load it, set them blocks in there.
Greg, what's that?
Yeah, something with the city. So, I don't know where, where Jimmy's at. He's stretched really thin right now. He's chasing a lot of county roads down south.
Everybody's busy right now.
Well, whatever you guys need, on a temporary note, I think there's like 16 of those retained blocks out there along the race drive. Use whatever you need.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I knew I'd seen them out there. I couldn't remember where, so, like, I know I've come across them. I appreciate that.
I think the big thing is, we got, we tried to set them, skister, our skister's not big enough to fill them up, so, you know, as the big thing, we'll have to get someone to pick them up and move over there for us.
Whoever goes in, they're going to sink about 30 feet.
Yeah, they ain't going to get it to the water.
Yeah, there's a lot of silt down there.
Yeah, there's a lot of silt down there.
Yeah, and I, I do apologize for the panic text, but I only had the information that I had, and you guys weren't only able to get over that, I couldn't over. So, I appreciate your quick response. Thank you.
If you guys need volunteer to remove some of that, I have a skister that I'm sure can remove some of that block.
Right? You guys got a plan of attack?
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah, please, on the wall.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you guys for coming in and...
Yeah.
Making a plan of attack.
Thank you.
I need a motion on the...
Paying motion to approve the chairman, senior chairman, dispatch joint powers here.
Second. Put a motion, pro per second, to authorize the chairman to take control of the dispatch joint powers agreement. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion, period. A long time, step forward. Been a long, drawn out fair. Next up is public comment.
Mr. Chairman, I want to thank you guys for putting on that, today, or two sessions you had for conducting board meetings, stuff like that. It was very, very helpful. Um, I'm, I can honestly say that when I gave my take away out of the, out of the class, we have stuff we need to work on, as far as, I'll, I'll say that fair board does. So, you know, it was, to me, it was very helpful, and I hope you guys continue doing some of these classes as, as we move forward. So, I'm just, just appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks, brother.
I agree with that. And during one thing that I just saw, I moved, instead of I make a motion with the class.
Then you have the public comment?
Yes, Mike Spelke and Tonya Tenny, I would just like to, I told you guys, we got the victim witness grant, and the position started on the first. So, Tara Dawson is our new victim witness coordinator.
Hi.
I just wanted to introduce her to you guys, get a face to an aim, so you know what's going on with that.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Congratulations. God help us.
Hi, I knew it was coming.
We'll move on to the road and bridge. Send an email, you want it to be read? Says, "Good morning, Barry. Due to numerous road issues because of the weather and staffing shortages this week, I will be unable to attend the county officials' meeting on Wednesday. If you'd please read this report for me." First up, I spoke with Rob Downey with the Forest Service regarding the Barton Road Extension. They will not issue a permit until the trespassing issue has been taken care of. I'm not sure how the board would like to approach this, but it needs to be dealt with. I don't know if that's, uh, when they started, well, Dan Harrell put that road in the car with, there's still a pile of brush and trees and stuff still there.
Actually, he called me and told me that, and I reached out to her, and she hasn't got back to me yet, but I'm trying to figure out what solution they would like. Hopefully, in the next week, I'll get an answer.
Otherwise, that's our, our old, you can't be publicized in a public hearing until that's, issue is taken care of on the 47th Monday. Uh, number two, we place one-stop sign at the intersection of Painted Hills and Kenwood Drive. I will talk to T-Square about scheduling a speed study up for that road, if the board would like to establish speed limit on that road. Do this board, do we want to establish a speed limit for that road? Give me some guidance if you're not going to do a speed limit.
Fast keeps good.
Yeah.
Out of favor.
I'm also there.
We didn't make a motion on that.
You probably should have.
Follow through with the speed study.
Yeah.
I moved that we follow through with the speed study on, was it Kenwood Drive?
Yep.
And that would be continued through Painted Hills.
Yeah.
This second one.
I have a motion, pro per second, to authorize Jim to reach out to T-Square to do a speed study on Painted Hills and Kenwood Drive, do a speed limit. Then the other discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion, period. Okay. And number three, all the blades are running, repairing damage from the rain. Cheyenne River area has probably had the worst damage. Those blades are working down there. And number four, trucks have been hauling to the Grease Road and other spots to fix damage. We'll have them hauling on the Cheyenne River Road this week to fix bad spots. Thanks, Jim Hansen. That was his update for road bridge. We need to reach back, anything we need to send back to Jimmy from the board? A little bit ahead of schedule, but next up is Title 25 with the hospital.
Hi.
Guys, you're up.
All right. I'm flying Angie Phillips representing the hospital, Mrs. Piper. Um, as you guys have heard, we've been having issues with the ambulance service, and I know that you guys have met, and the city. Um, in particular, we're having issues with the Title 25. Patients are unable to get them out of our facility. If they're going to Gillette Hospital or Casper Hospital, EMS will transport those. However, if we go to WBI, it's not medically necessary that they go by EMS transport. So, we're here today to kind of talk about different options. Um, other counties utilize the sheriff's department to transfer them down to WBI. Wondering if that is an option that we can consider, but we do have to get these patients ready.
Just have to have different fields in the audience.
Hi.
So, so with that, if you're going to use the sheriff, or trying to utilize the sheriff's office for that, I'm just going to... We are already kind of stretched to where our, we're stretched pretty thin, kind of currently at our current portions of it, because we're required for the courthouse security portions, um, and the transport. So, we don't have somebody who's designated strictly to transport, uh, titles or inmates or anything like that. So, it would be something that the board would have to look at, possibly expand to position, or a position to, to start to fund that portion of it, if that is something that would be looked at to, to do that. Because it would require somebody to be on call and overtime, um, and more funding to, to supply that position portion of it for, for us to, to do that. Um, and then especially if there, if there is no medical needs, or like, there's no, no injuries to that individual or anything, where they're, they won't go into some sort of, um, medical state that they need, uh, treatment. So, if they haven't, like, injured themselves, such as harm, like, cut or, or bleeding or anything like that, or don't have the chance to open in all that portions of, um, we could, we could visit that option if that is something that you guys would be looking at. So, with that said, basically, for us to do it, we don't currently have the staffing to do it, to be on call all the time. It's going to increase our overtime, um, and we would need some more staffing portion of that.
What, what's your approximate volume on transfers?
So, typically, to WBI, it's zero to four a month. So, there are some months we go with nothing, and then, you know, some we're changing out once a week, so.
Are there any companies out there that specialize in that transfer kind of program, like, there's nothing down there that you come get them?
No, we've tried, yeah.
I know we talked about it once before, but does the possibility exist that if an ambulance was made available, like, one up in Austin, or one of the county ambulances is still around, that the hospital itself could transfer those patients? that the hospital itself could transfer those patients?
Potentially, if, again, with staffing, yeah. Yeah.
You currently don't have any staff that is trained or, you have, I'm sure you have that specialized.
And they don't have to have any specialized training. I mean, yeah, we just basically need a driver and a vehicle.
I guess my question would be, the difference between what, what you feel needs to go by ambulance and what doesn't?
Yep.
What the liability would be for someone to take someone that, that when they left the hospital, they seemed to be okay?
Yep. So, those that would be deemed to go by ambulance are those that either have IVs, or we've had to sedate them. These are just people that just need to go from point A to point B. At times, we've had to, not particular Title 25, but same type of patient we'd be dealing with. We've had family members even transport them, but because they're Title 25, we're kind of dealing with completely different situations.
Just for everybody to see, where is WBI?
Casper. Mm-hmm. And it's just, they do inpatient care there, but they're not considered a hospital. It's like, kind of like an inpatient psych facility. So, these patients are medically stable, just, you know, they need psych.
Your attorney, have any wisdom on this?
I'm just worried about the sheriff's liability. I have talked to Sheriff Colehart a little bit about this issue, and Sergeant Fields brought it up, the liability on the medical side. I think we'd have to figure out something pretty airtight on that before anything is done through the sheriff's office.
Of these patients, do we have many of them that are reoccurring? I can give my medical attention taken care of. Okay. I've said I have the law stuff, so we can.
Yeah, yeah. And I guess if it's something that you guys don't reach out to Torrington, I know that they do use their Sheriff's Department to transport these patients, so maybe that might be somebody that's risked that portion.
The, and we're saying Torrington down in Gosham County, I believe they have a transport officer through their Sheriff's Office, and they're the ones who do the transport. So, that's, that's where I'm saying that they have that position, so that's, that's where they can, can get that filled in on that portion of it.
Yep.
You know, this is, I guess what sticks in my craw, it's an unfunded mandate that the state's supposed to count. Something we, I guess the board would need to address with our legislators about these unfunded mandates that we can't take care of. Now, when that, when that time comes around, it's going to be, we need everybody's support.
Yep.
But in the interim, what about you?
Dan, you know, the officer down there, they assist in the prison detention too?
The?
The transport officer?
Uh, no, I do not believe so. I believe it's strictly through the Sheriff's Office. So, through their detention, so they, I, they transport, and I believe they do federal holds, so they, so they pick up state contract or federal contracts, so they have a lot of transports that go in and out of their county. So, they have somebody, I think, believe that's designated for that, last I knew.
We got a facility, people.
And they're, yeah, they're.
One of the inmates.
Yep, so.
Mr. Chairman, I think you're right, that's something that we have to put in front of the legislature, but in the meantime, we can't afford any more airlifts, considering we went from four, I believe they said, to 12. And no matter if it's not funded or not, we may be forced to pay for those airlifts if the push comes to shove, where we could have invested in the time to provide them with a vehicle, or get somebody down there for a whole lot less money. So, we don't, we're dealing with, we went from four to 12 is what they said in the meeting, which is huge amount of money for lifeblood.
Let's say an ambulance was sold for $10 or whatever. Who owns the Upton?
Is that owned by the city of Upton?
So, now it'd be something that we have to be, but God's kind of taking home his light.
Yeah.
We have to work this.
Work the city of Upton, yeah. Quarter of that, or?
Kelly doesn't know any.
Would it be an opportunity for Upton, when they aren't set up for a complete deal, but they, a lot of times have a driver, if I remember correctly, be able to do an on-call thing, but then I'm sure they're talking about pulling money from them to, for the ambulance injuries. So, we have to fund that somehow, or pay that driver to do that. So, that might be a temporary solution, but we'll see what Commissioner Don's saying, too. Yeah, it comes out of them. So much per trip or whatever. Might actually hire, actually hire the Upton ambulance service to do our transfers.
What's it like, if you got a patient that needs to move, you got a window to, I mean, a couple hour window?
You know, we, some of them we've held for longer, but yeah, I mean, we'd like to get them out in a few hours, but it'd all depend on what's available.
What's a?
These non, non-medical, medical, they wouldn't necessarily have to have an ambulance then.
No.
They would just have to be transported. So, maybe it's just a matter of having a vehicle that would be safe for the driver. I don't know, but seems like a liability.
I think you're right, but I think the problem is, is what if you do need an ambulance, and we're putting somebody in a car, at least in an ambulance, it's kind of covered, you know, on the liability part.
Well, in these particular patients, I mean, if, I think that we can't say 100% that you're going to need an ambulance, but these are, yeah, not, like, anything where you would need an ambulance, so.
You can potentially find somebody in the community that might contract it up, I think, right? So, it's an option there, so you make some other options.
How about the senior center? Have all those vans that they transport people in?
That's a good thought. I'm trying to figure out, I'd find somebody to help me do the transfers. Wish I had a definite answer to give you right now.
Nope, not fine. We were just here just to, you know, bring them to the light. Of course, none of these happen, make fun, I give you pride, so. And a lot of people just aren't aware of the situation that we're dealing with right now, so.
When they're at your facility, are they tying up, like, in emergency room, or do you guys, where do you have to keep them at?
Typically, in emergency room, or the room right across from the nurse's station, so someone can watch them.
Those are tying up, right?
Yeah. Yeah, typically, these individuals are usually, you know, one to one, just to make sure that they're, you know, not armed to their select owners.
What's the direction the board want to go?
I would like, sorry, I'd like to put on old business and, maybe do it out there in the community, that there's an opportunity for somebody to do something privately, potentially, or, and even in the meeting, kind of have a chance to visit with Upton, kind of, and see if there's a possibility of using their ambulances for some of the, the, the ones that need ambulance care.
I just, I don't know why I wasn't thinking about it in the first place, but I, we also, I have the, I have a handicap van and driver full time up there, which might be a possibility, too. Something that we could work out, building a fort. The van's there a lot, and it may not be there all the time, but that wouldn't be a solution, too. I would just, you know, basically backcharge the, whatever, that, you know, work out a rate for that. But it just occurred to me, you have a driver and a van, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Just food for thought, you know, get the wheels to turn.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay.
We're just going to think on this, we don't have the motion ready.
No, we've no, no action taken today, it's just we'll put on old business, uh, revisit it, see if we, what kind of ideas and plans we can come up with.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Just a question I have for Dawn. That van, is it equipped to do some medical stuff in it, or is it just a transport?
It's just basically a transport.
Okay.
They have mounted the IV hook, but that's, because we have sometimes that have oxygen and that sort of things, but.
And these are just transport, no medical, it's just from point A to point B.
Okay. Maybe call me, we'll talk about it. It just occurred to me that we have one, so.
Yeah, that would be a great option.
Yep.
Definitely. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, next up is old business corner on Kenwood Drive. Well, they did get some stop sign put up there, so we did move earlier to do a traffic study on speed, and ended up in that area. David was visiting with Jimmy, they, well, they put up a stop sign, neither one got done, there were three people just do by it, run it.
So, there's, there is a stop sign, I haven't got it.
Yeah, they put a stop sign.
So, okay, because we were going to recommend a three-way stop for all, all intersections and advertise it.
Yeah, you might reach out to Jimmy, and, you know, I might get good notice, get everybody to stop from every direction. But like, so there is one stop sign now, so.
There's one, last time, there's one on the, coming from the north side off, I know that's portion, so. So, if we put a three-way in there, let's stop everybody, and then for the ask for you guys to advertise that that stop sign and everything has been put in place out there, so the public does know about the size, because it's been years of ingrained behavior of driving through. So, you put a change of yield sign to a stop sign, or, or anything like that, people, you'll get it on fever, cut across, still, some people are like, there's never been, it's been that way, at least I know, for 13 years, so, I mean, once you add something in, it's, it's trying to change a behavior that people have been, been ingrained in for generations, almost.
I'll reach out to Jim then, about making the three-way stop up there.
Yeah.
And then advertise more.
I would recommend that you guys, I would check out with the public.
That introduction of the traffic, the speed study. Anything else on the corner of Kenwood Drive? And next up is board training and meeting procedures.
Thank you. Along with what David was saying earlier, the, the board training was excellent, probably some of the best training I've ever been to. Very informative, very helpful. She was, Mary Martin, excellent teacher, made it fun, and she knows what she's doing. Same as Mr. Klein said about the Fair Board, Garrett and I were there both days, and it was clear that we have a lot of things that we can work on and, and make our board better. She also recommended the meeting procedures, and she would be available to do like a strategic planning session with us as a commission. She said she could do an evening and an all-day for us, and help us started on having a mission statement, bylaws, and meeting procedures, and that is done through the extension office, so it's free to us. So, the, the level of her training, and I think it would be foolish for us not to take advantage of, of her expertise in, in all of those things. Everyone that went really got a lot out of it. I talked to all the participants, and they all said, we should do this every year. And I agree that we should do that every year, hopefully get more and more people on these boards to go and do the training, because it was very, very helpful. So, I'd like to move to have Mary Martin come do strategic planning with us, to get our mission statement, bylaws, and meeting procedures in place. As soon as possible. July is probably not good, maybe next month, but we can, we'll have to see what her, her schedule is also.
Okay. Do you want to pin that day down more, or do you just want a second? Is that a second board?
Just for discussion, I know that when I scheduled the, the board change, I had scheduled early, because she said she.
Yeah, it would be pending her schedule.
Yeah, I know, I don't know what everybody else's schedule is. Mine is pretty hectic until probably end of November, end of November, somewhere's into there. That's putting it off quite a ways, but, you know, I don't know what everybody else's schedule is like after the end.
Well, this is our job.
Yep.
This is our priority.
I could say maybe after Fair in August.
I was thinking possibly this fall, if we.
Late August through September.
If I could reach out to her and see what she has open, and maybe bring back some dates to our next meeting.
Is there a public session, too? You want to check our calendar, because we've got things going on in August, and if you have it at the vet center, we've got things going on in September, and.
We could probably have it here if it's just us.
Can, that was my second question. Can the Fair Board go to it, too, to learn about maybe upgrading their bylaws and any planning?
Well, I would say probably this should be us, but I could ask her, she could do maybe half-day training while she was here.
We just sat and listened to how they did your bylaws and that, not actually make ours there, but it would teach us what we can do.
Well, it would probably be like a workshop, correct? So, it would be, it would be open to the public?
I, I would have, let's see what varies, you know, what she says. But I'm sure there's portions of that where, like the Fair Board could set in, that would mirror stuff, you know? But I would reach out to her, you know, make sure what's, what's available for them.
Mr. Chairman, I kind of agree with Linda, but in a different term, I, I don't think we should take away from what you guys are learning, but I would sure like to think that there would be a couple of you people that could sit down with the Fair Board and help us, you know what I'm saying? And we wouldn't necessarily have to have her, but at least if we can't do that, we could have a couple of you people sit down with us for a few hours and help us get in that same direction, because we are lacking our mission statement, we're missing, we're lacking a lot, and we have a lot of old paperwork that we're actually running off of. So, I would at least like to see that if we couldn't, if, if we couldn't get in on it.
Second, there's a motion to reach out to her to look into the late summer, early fall timeframe, to try to get set up for her training.
We have a motion promptly seconded to reach out to Mary Martin's on urging our training. Easy way to put that motion.
To, to do strategic planning to develop our mission statement, bylaws, and meeting procedures.
Is there any other discussion? Can you read what you got there, Becky?
Have Mary Martin come and do strategic planning, develop mission statement, bylaws, and meeting procedures.
Can you read what you got there, Becky?
Have Mary Martin come and do strategic planning, develop mission statement, bylaws, and meeting procedures.
Any other discussion? Mary, now, will you say aye?
Aye.
Or will you say nay? And you reach out to her, work with the fair board, jump if we need to use that facility out there to do it here. She very well have a good idea of what she needs for the facility to do down. We have nothing under new business. We're ahead of schedule, but we have the extension office using the fairgrounds update. Do you guys expect anybody else to do?
Yeah.
Chairman, were you waiting on anybody else?
Oh, no, I missed yours.
Hey, are you ready?
You're up.
Do I need to introduce myself? Okay.
Put the people on.
Perfect, Erin Percy, the 4H educator for Weston County, so I just brought some fun goodies. Um, so there's the July highlights, kind of looking back at what we've done in June, and kind of getting ready for July, so we had a really successful 4H camp, we actually ended up modifying camp and not spent the night due to the escaped prisoner, um, but we had a really good, turned out we ended up with eighty-two youth. So lots of really positive feedback from camp, we had a great day, we couldn't have asked for a prettier Saturday to have all the kids up there, and had a really great, um, we took the team leaders up on Friday and did set up and some really fun activities, and then all-day Saturday with all of the kids. So that was Friday, Saturday, um, that Tuesday, we turned around and we took eight youth to Laramie for showcase showdown for the robotics competition, we had the champion junior team and the reserve champion senior team, so that was a lot of fun, the kids did excellent, they participated in a drone workshop, we got to go to the innovation maker space there on UW's campus, and they got to do some really cool stuff, and I'm gonna look into, they have some mobile trailers that they'll actually bring out, those maker space tools, um, and we can have them for up to six months, so I'm gonna look into hopefully getting one of those maybe up here this winter, and they have 3D printers, and like a cricket machine, and all sorts of cool things. This year we did, they're called Makey Makeys, and we did electrical circuits, so that was fun with the kids. Before camp, we did a team leader meeting, um, kind of in preparation of 4H camp, so most fun is something I really look forward to, hopefully developing over the winter as a, those team leaders into a group that we meet with and do some really fun stuff, because that's a neat age group of kiddos. Project workshops and meetings that are continuing, our dog group is meeting twice a week for agility, and then obedience and rally classes, um, out of the fairgrounds, we had a swine fitting and showing workshop, going to be fitting and showing workshop last week. Um, due to the rain, no one could get livestock to town, so kind of a modified version of what we had planned, but can't catch the rain. On July eleventh, so next Tuesday, the beef production workshop is happening, so Shelby and Micah are going to do a workshop for the youth from two to three that afternoon, and we're either gonna trim um, beef hooves before or after that, so hopefully they'll have two reasons to come to town that afternoon, and then that evening is the producer workshop that Shelby and Micah are gonna do. We have a cake decorating workshop next week, and then the ultrasound slash carcass contest is on the seventeenth, which kind of kicks off county fair, which starts officially in sixteen days, if anyone's counted. This week, I'm taking, well, I'm not taking, I'm going, we have six youth participating in the state shoot in Douglas, so I'm gonna go and partake in what state shoot looks like, because that's probably the one 4H event across the state that in all of my years of 4H participation, I've never been to or seen, um, it's one of the biggest events that, um, Wiley 4H puts on, so I'm excited to see how our kids do, they did very well last year, so just some fun pictures too of camp and state, or showcase showdown. And then also in your packet is some stuff that I put together, um, kind of in conjunction with the junior livestock board, but we sent out to everyone that has market livestock at county fair this year, that marketing, your, you and your livestock project, and it just talks about, um, sending out buyer letters, inviting people to the sale, um, and gives them some guidance on how to do that. There is also the buyer letter that we sent out to all of the past buyers, um, that have participated at the sale in the last few years. There's a sale add-on form that went out with, so the kids were encouraged to send a fair schedule and the little trifold brochure about the sale and the add-on forms out to those buyers when they invited them as some additional information, so the add-on is if they don't choose to buy a whole animal, but as, um, you know, a business or a friend or grandparent, however, if you wanted to put an additional twenty-five, fifty, hundred dollars on an animal, those add-on forms will be used for that, so, and then we also included in there how to write a thank you note, so to hopefully encourage the kids to start thinking about after the sale, they'll need to write a thank you note and send it to that, that buyer, or even the, um, people that they invited to the sale, if they saw them, they're that evening, thanking them for coming, so that went out to fifty-ish kids, um, the week of camp, I believe. So I'm excited to hopefully, that'll encourage a few more buyers to come to county fair and get the kids thinking about um, encouraging more to come. So that's kind of what we've been working on, as well as getting ready for county fair. So any questions about any of that fun info, you guys are welcome to keep those topics, and hopefully you'll all come to the market animal sale on Friday evening of county fair, the thirty, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth? Twenty-ninth, thank you. So my only other, or my other big thing is, um, last Tuesday, Linda, um, came to my office about the board training that was out at the fairgrounds, and wanted me to sign a contract and provide payment for use of the event center for those two days. And so I just wanted to talk to you guys about that, because we had not, we don't have that budgeted into our budget, and I was kind of under the understanding that since it was a county event at a county facility, that we want, we didn't have to worry about that. So, that's, I'm just...
How much you charge?
Hundred and twenty-five dollars a day, so two fifty for the two trainees.
Mr. Chairman, you know, I've been around the fair board for quite some time, but in and out, and, and it isn't that we're losing money, I mean, it is a service that you guys are giving to our nonprofit groups like our 4H, FFA, uh, we've had ministerial organizations that come in there, and the fair board's always taking care of that. The fair board knows nothing about this, this has come up, we need to, we need to raise some of our costs, and this is part of our training, we went to. Before she ever received that, she should have, this should have went through the fair board, it should have went through us first, and, and, and we should have, we should have all known, we, I got blindside just as well as she did, and I believe the other members did too. It should have came before us, before we done it, I do not want to see us lose our opportunity to help our youth, they are our future. You know, and, and, uh, and if they use it all day, you know, maybe they can help us out with lights and stuff like that, but we've never charged them, and I, I really want to see that stay like it is, but I'd also like to address it with the fair board as a, as a group also first, before we go much deeper than that.
We need to clarify how I got from there to there. I brought the contract up to the county, so I was told we didn't count what you pay for using the facility, and then I was told to take it there, because they did the program, so I said, you guys figure it out between yourselves. I didn't take that there as a fair board member. My second thing is, is I disagree with David, and I'm speaking for myself, not as a fair boy member. I believe that best practice would be for that fairgrounds use is everybody and anybody that uses it pays for the use. Uh, it needs to be able to pay more for itself and not expect taxpayers to pay for that. The, uh, the thing I see is, is when people use the vet center, the doors are always blocked open, and the units are running full blast in the, in the indoor arena, people are leaving lights on in the, uh, in events we're having out on the track, the lights are left on for days and days, and the people that are going there, the users, need to be paying for that, not the taxpayers, and that's my belief on that.
I agree, Linda, it was a problem, I think two, three years ago, there was so much being given away, that it was, it was causing a huge problem. This is partially my fault, because I had worked with Erin to try to find a place, and I didn't even think about that aspect of it, and, uh, but you're right, it, it's a beneficial thing to the county in so many facets that I, I think that, I mean, I'm either willing to pay for it, or I think the county commissioners can find it in our budget to pay for it, but it's something that, uh, is beneficial and everybody to take course, and I, I have no problem either, or with this.
I, I also agree with Linda, because, I mean, I've said since I started that the facilities have to be able to maintain themselves, one way or the other, they're gonna come out, if we don't have enough money to pay for these things, they're gonna come out of the budget, and these facilities should be self-maintaining as much as possible, I also think that events like this, um, the county should, I mean, at very minimum, take care of the lights and the things that it costs to do those things, in benefit of training the accounting employees, but there has been a lot of, honestly, what I've seen just sitting down with the old manager in the first, and there's been a lot of just giving stuff away, and frankly, we can't afford to do that, and keep the facility nice, and, you know, hire people, and do all those things. The community pays for it, one way or the other, so I think it needs to be handled like a business, I mean, you don't work for free, and you can't expect to work for free, so I, I see the points to what you're saying.
Vicki Gaiman, um, extension coordinator, I guess, for Weston County. Um, we in the past twenty-five years, 4H is an extension, we've always had that kind of MOU between the county and the community, we've never paid for facilities, I know we do some 4H act, a lot of 4H activities out there, if we have to start paying, we're gonna have to ask you for budget money increases also, um, you know, we understand if there's some other event already scheduled, we've, we've never bumped anybody, to my knowledge, to hold something if it's facilities open, um, I've even had fair managers contact us and say, could you do with half the building, another group wants in, we've done our best to be very accommodating, but, um, I don't know, I, that really wor, that would worry me, Dawn, just a little bit, because we do use it a fair amount, it just depends, I mean, there are certain times of the year we may not use it, mentioned in the winter, but other times of the year, we do use it for tumbleweeds meetings and various things we do for the youth, yes.
Yeah, don't misunderstand me, I, you'd have to ask for more money, but I mean, in the system of checks and balances and running the business, you, you, I mean, they, they have revenue going in and going out, so your, their shortfall comes out of their budget the same as yours, I don't, I don't even begin to suggest that you should pay you, and it may seem the way it is, but it should be balanced out, so that every department is getting, or every entity is getting their revenue, and, and coming back in, it will, it will actually make the balance of the budget much, much better.
My worries are, is just in the last week, we had, you know, the dog kids are using the sheep barn two nights a week, and have their equipment set up, um, we have since, I don't know, the weather finally got nice in April, um, and we'll have it set up until county fair, and we switched the sheep barn over. Um, last week, we had a horse workshop, or a riding clinic Wednesday evening, um, we did safety certifications Thursday morning, that beef fitting and swine fitting, those are all things at the fairgrounds, but I certainly did not write into the budget for this coming year. And if we can't use the fairgrounds, I don't know where I hold events like that for these kids to have access to the work type of workshops and opportunities that are happening right now.
I don't, I don't think this is something that we can institute tomorrow, just so you understand, but I think in the bigger picture of things, it's no different than your household, you know, you plan on, you don't plan on a furnace going out, but if these things are being used at the, at the fairgrounds, or any facility, there's gotta be a way to pay for them, and a balanced budget's gonna come more from identifying those kind of, as much as you can, those kind of situations, and being able to adjust to them without taking revenue from another entity. I don't wanna say freebie, but that's what it ends up being, because in the end, they gotta pay for the lights, they gotta pay for the gas, they gotta pay for the maintenance people for those events, those things have to be taken care of, so I, I think this is, what I'm saying is more of a bigger picture, it's something that should be looked at. We simply don't have the budget to, you know, have these things happen, and then, well, we didn't count on this, and we didn't count on that, we didn't count on this, we wanna try to maintain the buildings as best as we can, at least I do, I'm sure the other commissioners do too, but I'd like to see a more balanced budget with those things maybe in mind.
On that, you know, on the two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar bill for the two-days of training, I, I see no problem with Ford's mission, we shouldn't pay that out of somewhere from here, if we, that's, that's a training that we requested, put on, I have no problem if the board approves it to make up that, the fairgrounds, that two-hundred-and-fifty dollars for that. With, you know, we're losing our use out of this county, nobody stays, you know, with the 4H as an investment in our use, you know, that's, that's a investment in our community, and I feel between the fair board, the knowledge they have, there can be some kind of checks and balances worked out somehow, you know, to keep the 4H involved out there. Economically, one way, you know, somewhere or another, but I trust the fair board can work with 4H, you know, but I like with Commissioner Taylor's, like, you know, this, it takes a lot to keep them buildings up, that's something we need to look at, you know, fair board needs to look at, because you're in charge of, you know, to how to, how to maintain that and pay the utilities, and still be cost-effective, and to keep our, our 4H kids involved, yeah, so, that's, that's my two cents on it, and so...
Um, now, I'm not talking about for the fair board, I'm talking about personal experience, I think, um, going on, looking into like building 4H, coming out there and doing their objects, and as far as I'm concerned, fairgrounds is, that's what it's, I mean, without 4H and FFA, a lot, most of that, most of the fairgrounds is not usable, that's what it's there for. So if we start building the 4H and those guys are using that, it's kind of, uh, have redundant, I think, um, and it's a thing that we need to go through with the fair board, you know, we need to start, and making money, that place making money is an issue that we need to address. We need to start, and making money, that place making money is an issue that we need to address. Which after fair, it's my person to sit down and reduce some policies for usage and stuff. But I will do anything, everything in my power to keep the 4H paying to use that facility or the FFA or anything. That's like, as I said, that's your youth, you know? In my mind, our youth getting education, getting training out there is something that's more important than quite a few things. But as far as that grounds making money, I mean, there's, there's some severe potential for that fairgrounds to make money. But that might be another, that might be a discussion at the right time and stuff. That's my comment on that.
And on, on that issue there is, you know, you've got some projects going, you know? Maybe have a 4H work day. You know, you've got some, you need some help with some, you know? That's a good way for the 4H kids to get input back into the fairgrounds on what it takes to maintain these facilities, you know? Get them a little ownership into the, into the, to it.
We have two workdays and nobody showed up.
But...
Okay, thank you. Dawn? Again, the 4H is a very important program and our children are worth investing in. But one way or the other, I hope you guys understand that even if they pay nothing, there's still a cost to do those things, whether you see it up front or in the back end. There's still a cost to turn on the lights and to run the machines and put the fuel in there. There's still those costs, well worth it for our youth. I'm just saying we need to figure out a way to balance it out so that we can do that within budget as much as we possibly can, whether it be a fundraiser or whatever. Us not charging 4H doesn't mean there's no charge for 4H. There's charges, so we just don't see it.
Are there any fees incorporated into the sales prices on the animals for the fairgrounds? No ground usage or anything like that? I want to make a comment on what Erin brought up earlier on. The program that you've been doing is phenomenal. I had kids coming up before the sale was done last year with the thank you cards already made out. So what I'm looking at is, is 4H is a program developing real world scenarios with these children. They got to understand, they've got to get up and feed these kids, or feed these animals. And even when they don't want to, when things come around, it's teaching them with real world responsibility. Also, what's incorporated with real world responsibilities are fees that it takes to, to do what you're doing. They see a profit coming in from their, maybe a profit hopefully, from their market steer or whatever animals they're raising, understanding that there might be a fee incorporated in that that will take care of a portion of fairgrounds costs or something like that. Maybe I thought, I didn't know if there was or not.
Mr. Chairman, just one other quick thing. If we want to see a paper trail of money, I agree. We can, as long as they got the money in their budget and they continue using the facility, we can, we can do that, I can, I can see that. But we can also, and I don't know if something like this would work, because I know Karen, before she put together as the year went on, of what we, you guys putting in kind, and we stuck a dollar amount to it, so at the end of the year, you knew what, what we actually, you know, what we actually put out for that, what we could have brought in. But it's a paper trail however you want to do it. And I think either one of those is worth, as long as we, we're assured that, you know, 4H, like I said, I use 4H because, like you said, we got to have them. As long as they're assured they got their money to pay for it, we can charge them for it. But where do we end? Do we, we charge everybody? I mean, it costs us to work the arenas. So if we got one, one kid that wants to come in and run barrels and play with it a little bit, are we charging them? I don't know how we'd ever manage it because they come in at all, all hours of the day. But we can make either one work, just, just work with us, let us know what we got to do and so we can work with the 4H group. And we will make it happen, one way or the other. I mean, that's, that's where I stand on it. So I, as long as it isn't going too deep into them and they got to cut the programs.
It's not, not...
And I understand, that's exactly what you said.
But like you were saying on people coming in, I mean, maybe a day pass. You know, if it's a $5 day pass for them to come in and use the arenas or whatever, it's still collecting on a cost. That person leaves, you still have to groom the arena, you still have to do all those things. That costs.
Right.
So I, I agree with, you know, Garrett or Commissioner Borton, I agree with the chairman. I'm just saying if we tighten that up, because one way or the other, we're going to pay that fee.
Yeah, and that's exactly right.
The wall's a good example, you know? We can say, you guys got it for free. It's really not free, but where does it come from? In the end, you're coming back here, they're saying, it's not really in our budget to do this, but we, we got to take care of it, so it comes out of us. Maybe it's people out there that don't use the fairgrounds at all.
Right.
So their argument would be, well, why does this money have to go to the fairgrounds? I have a project that I want too. I'm just saying if we balance the budget out.
And I've heard that, I've heard that, that same scenario year after year and, and, you know...
The fairgrounds is well worth the investment. The kids are well worth the investment. I'm talking just strictly business and budget. We need to find a way to tighten it up a little bit so that we have money for unexpected things. Or we can donate to 4H without one. We take from here, we're going to have to take from here. That's what I'm saying.
Right. And like I say, I was blindsided also when she got the contract. I'll guarantee you, this will be, we will address some of these stuff at the next Fair Board meeting. We'll, we'll start working on it. And like I say, I just feel strongly about the program and, and the same thing. So thanks for talking.
Thank you. We do have an issue. Do we need to have a motion to pay the $250?
I'll make a motion to pay the, the $250 for the commissioner's training. I would recommend we take it out on financial admin to pay that cost.
I second that.
The motion, probably seconded to pay the $250 for the two days' use of the event center for the board training commissioners put on. Is there any other discussion? Karen, all of the people please say aye.
Aye.
If you guys can get your minds, you're off the hook.
So my only other question was budget hearing, are we having one? We're going to scale those, we have a workshop today. Okay. And then have we heard anything from Golden West on like what the internet is like? We were without internet for two, the majority of two days last week again. Well, but, well, we have been, and so Visionary's Tower was down for an hour of it. But it's the, like, it's going through the Golden West, this visionary was working, but it's the routing through Golden West that's causing problems. And I know Charles has come and looked and so we could continue to figure out why.
The same one locked out, silly. And I have contacted them too. Her house, so he won't be able to get it.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate your help.
Thank you.
And then Becky, try to fill her mouth, like, do I give you this to go through? Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, thank you Fair Board. If there's anything else needs to come before they leave this board? Your own order.